I call this Wednesday, July 19, 2023, meeting of the Grafton Board of Library Trustees to Order. Welcome, everyone. Hope everyone's enjoying your summer. Okay. First item on the agenda is minutes approval for June 28. I'll accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 28, 2023, meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do you want to give that to Doug?
Sure.
All right. Motion made by Aaron, seconded by Doug to approve the June 28, 2023 minutes as drafted. Do I have any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Declare the motion carried. Minutes for June 30, 2023, which was a brief quorum assembly at the retirement for Marilyn. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the, approve the minutes from the June 30 meeting, 2023.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion made by Aaron, seconded by Doug to approve the minutes as drafted. Any discussion on the motion?
No, it was a lovely celebration. Thank you very much, Beth, for organizing it, and thank you, everybody who attended. I think, I think all of us, I think, attended it, so, yeah.
All of us here. Yeah.
Yeah. Really, really nice. It was nice to see representatives, you know, from, you know, David Meridian came, representative from Mike Moore's office came, representative from the Select Board, you know, came, and all presented certificates to Marilyn. So it was just really, really nice to see that. And of course, we, and Roger did a wonderful job presenting that, you know, beautiful letter that, you know, that Beth helped, you know.
Yeah. Beth really did the legwork on that. I just kind of did the formatting and everything like that, so.
Marilyn was very overwhelmed and very grateful. She, I guess, had told somebody, "I would like a bigger deal made of, of it," and was not expecting how big of a deal.
Yeah, it was very, it was really nice.
Thank you to everyone who contributed to a gift for her, too. She was really touched.
So my other formatting comment had to do with, I guess I stepped on some toes here. So I had, had been less than completely aware of the, the sort of scribe duties, Debbie's scribe duties, in that I was doing the volunteer work of an employee. Okay? And so I drafted these. So it says respectfully submitted Roger Archahan, Jr., Chair. I don't know if, if that's going to be an issue or whether we can just simply agree or that we change that to your name, Debbie, or do we keep it the same? Is it going to be an issue?
I think keep it and just be aware going forward.
All right. Okay. Do you want to comp for a half hour or do we just call it a day?
Ooh.
I don't know. I mean, I'm not your boss. I don't, I can't. But I'll be mindful of that. I was just trying to, to ease the.
It was very helpful.
So, okay.
It's maybe a first.
There you go.
Yeah.
So had I given you a, do you have a copy of this? I mean, I, in order to take the draft off, in other words, I added the draft to the Word doc and then turned it to PDF. I don't think I gave you the Word. Do you mind, then, if, after approving these, that I just submit these to the town clerk? How would, how would you want that to work?
They should go to.
Send it to me and.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. Along with, like, the proclamation and copies and.
Okay. So I will send you the Word, I'll take off the draft from the Word version and then send it to you. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion to approve the June 30 minutes?
No.
All right. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Declare the motion carried. Okay. Approval of bills. We have, I think, four bills. And so the first one, I think, that you may be calling 53A, Beth, is that the one for 3,695 and 54 cents? Is that what you're calling?
Let me open it up. Fifty, it's warrant 53, but it was so big, we had to split it into two pieces, so.
So, so what you're calling 53A on the agenda is that, yeah, I'm looking at 3695 and 54.
Is this in the meeting packet?
Yeah, I, I think it, yes.
Right below the minutes.
Yes.
I see it, yeah.
3695.54.
So before accepting a motion to approve that bill, I, I know, Debbie, that you had originally put an agenda together, and then there was the amended agenda. And so I see 53A, 53B. There was a warrant number three. Is that still on there or was that? All right. Because it.
It should be the last one in the packet.
Because it didn't show up on the amended agenda, so I don't know if that was a prior version, but it's, it's, it's still a correct and updated version because I see that 5B, new business regarding the American flag and flagpole was added. And so I don't think it's fatal that we necessarily, I mean, to be able to vote on these warrants, that they necessarily all have to be listed in number because we don't know what we're calling 53A or 53B.
It was submitted and posted by the clerk's office today.
Right.
The amended agenda.
When was that?
Today.
Today.
By noon today. Noon of the, the meeting date is the last, is the deadline for submitting an amended agenda. And it was submitted and, and posted with warrant three, FY '24 warrant three.
So you're saying this morning?
This is not the most current.
This morning for today?
Yes.
Okay. My understanding was that for open meeting law purposes, that even an amended agenda would be 48 hours. Okay.
Noon, the day of the meeting.
Okay.
According to the clerk's office.
Okay. All right. All right. So 53A, then, what are you calling 53? Is it 3695, 54?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Does everyone have a, a copy of that?
Yep.
Okay. And you can just reference, then, the sources from the, you know, the meeting packet. I'll accept a motion for warrant number 53A in the amount of 3695, 64. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve warrant number 53A for the amount of $3,695.54.
Second.
All right. And if you could just list the sources, even if by reference?
The sources are the General Fund and other special revenue town.
Okay. And do I have, okay, so a motion made by John, seconded by Doug. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah. My only question is, you know, there's tons of, like, little small ones, and Ingram is the book thing, so occasionally there's, like, a big number. Is that just because there's, like, a bulk order?
It really depends on how things come in. So we might order a cart of materials worth $800, and then, as the items come in, we get individual invoices or invoices for things that are grouped together.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Declare the motion carried. Okay. 53B, are we calling 53B the $13,802.13?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I'll accept a motion to approve warrant number 53B in the amount of 13,802 and 13 cents? Don't, I'll answer at once. I'll entertain a motion.
There's a lot of scrolling.
I know.
Actually, the schedule by fund remote is actually the first, the first one?
Twenty-two, I think.
This one? This is what?
Yep. Yeah, that's why I had it now.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's equally brief to the prior one.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrant number 53B for the amount of $13,802.13 with the sources being the General Fund and the state grant town.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion made by John, seconded by Doug. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Declare the motion carried. Okay. Now, so warrant three, which was, was that the 523179?
No.
That's the only other one.
Five thousand, five thousand two hundred thirty-one seventy-nine.
Yeah. 523179? Okay, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And if you could just bear with me a moment. And that was contained in the packet, so, all right. Do I have a motion to accept warrant number three in the amount of 523179?
Make a motion to accept 53B in the amount of 523179.
Oh, so it's 53B, not 3B.
53B.
No, this is warrant three for FY '24.
It's, it's number three.
Warrant number three.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not on that one.
Gotcha.
Okay. And, all right, so you made a motion, Doug, do I, did I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Motion made by Doug, seconded by John to accept warrant three in the amount of 523179. Do I have any discussion on the motion?
The T and G, is that a yearly subscription? So it's like $1,100?
Telegraph and gazette, yes.
Yeah.
I know a subscription.
Sorry.
Yep.
So that's like a yearly paper just prescription, subscription?
Yes. And then we, I think we sometimes get additional bills during the year because they now charge us for inserts and we can't seem to opt out of them. So sometimes there's additional bills for those.
Like adds, like, to, like, coupons and stuff?
Flyers.
All right. Flyers and, sorry. And that costs extra? Do you know how much extra?
We'd have to go through the year's worth of bills to see if there's additional.
Okay. No, it would be nice to know, you know, every, every dollar counts, you know? I would hope that the stuff we don't need is not exorbitantly adding to the cost.
No, I don't think that it is.
Okay. All right.
And that's heavily accessed, like heavily read?
We don't have any way to count newspaper usage.
Right.
Because it's not connected. People don't check them out. They only read them in house. So we'd only know if somebody didn't put it back and left it on a table.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
And we have people come in and ask for it, so.
What is the grand total for warrant three?
5231 and 79 cents. All right. Any discussion, any further discussion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Declare the motion carried. Okay. This one was the most recent one, which was, actually, going to my trusty iPhone, this, what are we calling this? Is this going to be then 53C because it's FY '23?
I'm not clear on what you're talking about. We have three warrants on the agenda.
Okay. So do we, so this is a deferral to next meeting, the 10-352? The email you sent us this afternoon for the deficit?
No, that is for discussion under FY '24 budget update.
Oh, okay. Okay. I thought this was under approval of bills because I was like.
No, I can't do any, I'm, I'm actually going to be looking for approval to do something.
Right. Right. Okay.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
So I'm not getting the email, so is, so can you check the email address if I have for me?
Yeah. We asked Cindy.
Okay. So I wonder, I made the same mistake. I think your email address, I thought I was making a mistake, it's @mail.com?
Yes, it's, there's not Gmail.
I thought it was @Gmail, and I had originally sent you something at Gmail and it didn't get to you. So there may be.
It's @mail.com.
Right. And I'd never heard of that domain, so that's why I had.
I had that one in college, so you're not alone.
Okay. You're aging yourself.
I always tell people when I sign up, it's, you know, it's @mail, not @Gmail, but yeah, I've had that for quite some time now, but.
All right. So then moving on to ongoing business, 3A, MPLCP, the building program and grant update, Beth.
I still have to write the May report that is overdue. I sat down a couple of times to do it and it timed out, and I kind of didn't get back to it. Building Committee has not met to pay bills, so we're going to be looking at meeting the first Monday in August, I believe, to finish up some bill paying.
All right. That's the Planning and Building Committee, you said?
Yeah. Planning and Building Committee, they pay the bills related to the construction. We still have, we meet every Monday. The meetings are generally shorter, but we still have the same things that are outstanding on our punch list without much forward momentum.
Okay.
So they are an ADA sign for the exterior of the building from the Grafton Common entrance that directs people who can't get up the stairs to go around to the accessible entrance.
Right.
The architect looked through his notes and did discover he has a suggestion, I think, possibly from Accessibility Commission, to make an adjustment or change, so now he's got to go back and redesign it before we produce the sign. But this has been, like, we've been talking about this for a long time.
Beth, can I interfere? Okay. So you said you meet every Monday?
We, every Monday at four o'clock. It's the construction team, the owner's project manager, Mark Sullivan, the architect project manager, Ron Palilo. William Blake is invited to attend and shows up more often than not. Cynthia Kaplan, who's our lead LEED certification consultant, and myself, it's five people.
Is it like an hour meeting or like?
Usually now we're meeting for 15 or 20 minutes, so just to guess.
Is it like a Zoom meeting?
It's a Zoom meeting.
Okay. Wow.
Yep. So that's the meeting that I go to and I say, "So, we had a leak at the storefront window in the adult, you know, reading area at this one location during the driving rainstorm."
Yeah.
And then I hear back from, oh, and the, the construction manager also comes, that's Matt K. from CTA Construction. So they tell, they can tell me things like, "Oh, we'll find out from Chandler why that might be happening." And then they get in touch with Chandler, who installed the windows that we purchased, who says, "Oh, that's actually not unusual. You know, they are sealed. You might see a little bit of water because of the design of it, but it shouldn't be flooding, so let us know. It's probably the wind and the angle. It's happened once in two years. Let us know if it becomes an issue."
Did we have flooding with the, that door?
We didn't have flooding with the door in the recent, the most recent two storms, which is wonderful.
Good.
However, while Chandler was on site to take a look at the makerspace and presentation area doors, which they were moving and redoing because they were incorrect, I asked their door person to come and take a look at that exterior door, and said I'd heard some feedback that this is not actually an exterior door. And he said, "It's a door that you can use on the exterior." But he went out and looked at the framing and said, "I don't think this was framed in the appropriate way for it to be an exterior door," and he pointed out some design issues that he said would cause water to come in toward the door and then go down. He opened the door and noted the concrete with a very thin metal weather strip was not sealed, like there's no gasket or caulking down as you step over the threshold. He said that would be a solution. And then he bent down and he looked at the door, and what I was told was the door is very high-tech and it was designed with a gasket inside the door. So when the door is closed, the gasket has dropped, drops down to make a seal, and then when you open the doors, you open, swing it open, the gasket recedes up, so it doesn't drag. But if you look at our door, there, you can see daylight all the way through. So, and even when the door is closed, you can see the gasket kind of at an angle, like it's not dropping down all the way. And the door person who looked at it said that it looks like the, these bolts are rusty and this whole assembly is rusty, which means they didn't use exterior bolts, stainless steel exterior bolts, on this door.
Did he give any indication as to, like, what a rough cost might be to do those repairs?
That's not his job, yeah. He's a technician for Chandler, and he said that he would bring it back to his boss and, you know, whoever does the estimating. But he also said, "This is not a door that Chandler installed."
Okay.
So Chandler did the windows, pardon me, they did the makerspace doors, they did the front storefront doors, but they didn't do other exterior doors.
Could we get a quote from Chandler for, for that work? Because it sounds like.
If that's something they take on, they may not do exterior doors at all because, you know, the feedback that I was getting from him was, "This is not our, our door. We do this other type of door."
Okay.
So if they're not able to remediate it, then we'll have to find somebody else, and this wouldn't be scope of project unless somebody wanted to make a big enough stink about this isn't, wasn't done appropriately.
I mean, it wasn't done appropriately.
That's correct.
I mean, it's a new building, it was, the door was installed as part of the construction, so that's really, so whoever installed it, it does, it sounds pretty obvious that it's, wasn't done properly.
But it got past the clerk of the works in the OPM two years ago. And while the door might have a 10-year warranty on, like, the actual door.
Installation.
Installation may not, and so this is something I'll be bringing to building committee because they're the ones who paid the bill and should be advocating.
All right. And when is the next building committee?
So again, I think we're going to try and meet the first Monday.
First Monday of August.
But the clerk of the works and the OPM would have presumably signed off and approved that as part of their.
Right. Okay.
And what I'm hearing as well is that with some, with most projects, you'll make a list of the things that aren't quite right, and then for the final bill, to settle the final bill, say, "Well, you didn't do this, so we'll fix it, but you give us the money back for it." We would need, like, at least one to 2% of the, the total cost of the project and, like, errors.
Sure.
To bring a package together to make it worth, like, pursuing a legal remediation.
So that's August 7th is the, the Monday, right?
Okay. All right. Any other building program or grant updates before moving on to FY '23?
HVAC continues to be an ongoing issue. There's a lot of noise and clanking in the system, hard water stop. When we lost power at, I mean, this, this is June report, right, but this happened in July, we lost power, I guess, around 3:00 AM Saturday morning. So I got a text from the children's room, email from the children's room, that the temperature was 75 degrees and climbing Saturday morning.
You didn't have to shut down because it didn't reach 80, correct?
Well, the other piece is, we wouldn't shut down the whole building if one room was too hot.
Right. No, I'm talking about that area, that area.
Yeah. I think it's, like, 82 over an hour.
Okay.
If we had no other option.
That's for all.
So my instructions were, if we need to, here's what you would do, but you can keep the building open and be in other areas if we need to. And I directed the staff to go to the custodial closet and see if they could manually, with the tablet on the wall that controls the whole system, log in and make those changes.
So what, what is the current situation?
It worked, and, and it seems to be okay.
Good.
However, I still have thermostats that are now granting permission to change the temperature above and beyond what was programmed. So it's like the power outage knocked out all of the programming. So the children's room staff can change the workroom from not only the temperature range beyond 68 to 74.
So is there a long-term software fix? Have you called someone that would be, and is there, is there, is that something that can be looked at remotely or, or?
I think they need to come back on site and reprogram.
Okay.
But I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah. So again, I forwarded it all to the construction team.
Okay.
We did not discuss it in our Monday meeting, so it'll be on the agenda for next Monday.
Okay.
But, yeah.
All right.
It's pretty wonky.
So I was in there the other day, maybe yesterday or two days ago, and the historic reading room was warmer than the rest of the building. It was like, I looked at the thermostat, it was 76, and like, the main thermostat, and then at the top of the stairs was, said it was 72.
Yeah.
And I think Sandia, maybe, told me that, that was the thing, so I.
So hopefully, then, we can get that moving forward to the next step during that meeting. Any other grant or building program updates before we go on to FY '23?
No, I'll just, I'll say again that the HVAC system not being fixed enough to be commissioned continues to hold up our completing our LEED certification.
Right.
Application.
Right.
Which we wouldn't see that money anytime soon, not until at least next summer.
And the deadline for that LEED is April.
April. Yeah. The clock's ticking.
All right. Let's, let's keep that on our.
I mean, is there anything we can do from this end about that particular issue or?
I mean, I, I keep, you know, complaining, griping, giving feedback that the system does not work, and there's no remediation. So maybe somebody besides me needs to continue to speak up and agitate because I'm not being successful.
I mean, the town is still holding back money from the project.
$50,000.
To encourage this stuff to get done, but.
The power of the purse. Right.
But obviously, it's not enough to solve the problem quicker.
Yeah. The latest suggestion was that perhaps it was a maintenance issue and that we had unclean filters, or we, and we have Renaud coming four times a year to clean filters, and they've been able to clean all but two, and the two they can't clean are because of the building design where there's big access panels that you unlock to pull the filter down, but then the roof grid that's just under the access panels, it's much smaller, and they have to change the roof grid of the hung ceiling to get to those access panels. So I do have two filters that we have not been able to change for two years because of this design flaw.
All right.
And when I said, "So you're telling me that the thing that's happening up on the roof and the vibration and the noise might be related to these two things that we can't change?" They said, "No, that, that can't be it. Something on the first floor wouldn't affect the roof." They also suggested that Renaud is not, was not doing their job and that we paid them and they just must not have done the job to change the coolant and check the levels.
Who said that?
We don't need to implicate people if it's speculation, I don't know.
Yeah. No, they came and they did the work.
Okay.
The latest suggestion has been perhaps there's a problem with our water system on site that is not allowing the system to work as it needs to, like a pressure issue from tonne of Grafton water.
So when will you have the May report?
I'm hoping to finish it by the end of this week.
All right. Great.
Yeah.
All right.
We're always two months behind.
Okay.
And Mass Board reminds me every month, if you just do the final report, you don't have to do any more monthly reports. And I say, "I understand that, but the project's not done, so I'm not comfortable writing a final report until we don't have a punch list anymore and we're not having any more meetings about the building."
Right. Okay.
So, yeah. That's why I'm putting myself through this torch.
Okay. FY '23, I'm just going to try moving this along, that's all.
Sorry.
FY '23 budget update.
Sure. So this morning, I got an email from Mary Loria that we went over budget this year by 8,000, hang on one second. I can't find it. I think it was 8,420.
So it had to say.
It says 8,480, 8480, 10. $8,480.10, FY '23 balance to cover.
We got almost, I think, $7,000 worth of invoices from Ingram, our book vendor, a week before the fiscal year ended, that they were like, "Oh, hey, these are from the fall. Here you go." What?
So, so.
What?
But wouldn't that be like an accounts payable? Like, how would we not know that that would somehow have been due?
Yeah. Eileen and I were not tracking it closely enough.
Okay.
Clearly. And we still had, you know, in our books, we thought we still had that money, so.
Okay.
We didn't. So we went over by 800, $8,480.10.
So what would, what would keep us back on track to prevent that from happening again that we, you know, that could have been any number from any sources. It could have been eight or 18 or 28. I'm just, I'm not scolding you, I'm just politely asking what would prevent this from happening again. I think it's just very important that these debits and credits that we.
You're right.
I hate surprises. I don't know about anyone else, but.
Me, too.
Okay.
Yes. More library support staff would be really helpful. Eileen not having to leave the desk, her, her desk to go and cover public service desks because we do not have enough staffing, me not having to leave my desk and cover desks because we do not have enough staffing. Those two things would allow us to focus much more on our day-to-day duties, and I'm still spending four to six hours a week on construction issues. I'm also doing some cleaning. I'm also doing IT because we do not have the staffing that is adequate for the size and scope of our library and our services.
And I know that we had had a discussion, and I had recommended, and I, I think it's just a best practice, and I, I think everyone would agree that kind of tracking in objective terms as far as hours and time spent on things that are, are sort of troubleshooting because of the project and other related matters because of a lack of a clerk of the works and such, I think would be beneficial for us to understand it, you know, in, in more objective terms as far as time. And if it's related to, you know, finances, I think that's just a, I mean, that's such a priority, is, is keeping tabs of the debits and credits that, that we don't find ourselves last minute finding out about, you know, deficit type of things.
We were at 89%, which was on target for the, the last month of the fiscal year, and it was a bit of a surprise. I will also remind the board that we didn't get all of the budget that we asked for either last year or for this current new fiscal year, and expenses run very high and the costs go up every year.
Are we, are we at that 13% state threshold? Are we still in compliance with that percentage?
We're in compliance, yeah. Yeah. We've overstated.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right.
Does your individual department heads manage their own invoicing or does that all come to?
No. Eileen does it. The department heads are responsible basically for their book budget allocation.
Yep.
So making sure they spend a certain amount every week or every month and not more than. And we also have it divided out over 11 months, not 12, kind of specifically to prevent this so that we're not ordering in June and then going, "Oh, no, we need, you know, more money."
And is that something that your assistant could add to her responsibilities, is to help with the invoicing? Or is it not really in that?
I don't think so. I mean, yeah, it's Eileen's job.
Okay.
Yeah.
The thing with that, what happened with that Ingram invoice is that the department heads placed the orders, correct? And then Eileen gets the invoices. She did not get those. I was in the office with her the day that, that they sent them beyond FY '23, and it was not a great day in the office. She was very concerned about that. But it wasn't, and it wasn't a failure on her part.
Yeah. I think you're going to make the same point. We're all thinking, go ahead.
Okay. It's, it's my job to recognize it. I'm messing with you. Yeah. Please.
Okay. So when somebody places an order, I guess, what is the procedure to allow the staff to place an order? And is Eileen notified of that when the order is placed? Because if we're getting the invoice after the fact, I mean, how could she possibly keep track of it? Like, I mean, you know, your system, so I, my, I'm, you know, I, my expertise is in Oracle ERP applications where we do matching of purchase orders, you know, invoices with purchase orders, so, you know, typically, like, so I would typically expect that there'd be like a purchase order. So, um, you know, typically, like, so I would typically expect that there'd be like a purchase order that is approved. And then once that purchase order is approved, then the invoice comes in and we match against it. And if the invoice comes in and there's no purchase order, then, you know, you say, well, you, you know, that wasn't really authorized, so.
We had purchase orders.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so there were open purchase orders and then, so that.
Yeah, that we continued to spend against, that we had money for, so.
But you always know the unencumbered balance, like, so you know what open POs that haven't been paid yet, invoiced yet.
Yeah.
Okay, so the, it, it's that the, it was finally billed. So I, I just wasn't, I mean, I guess we weren't aware of it or would not have otherwise been aware of it, I guess, until a bill arrived.
Right.
Okay.
But, no, I'm, I'm confused. So if there was a purchase order for it, then, and the order was placed, like, that's an open PO. So that's, so that would be accrued, right, or?
Right, you must.
But if, but if we didn't have the invoice, right, we couldn't apply it against the purchase order. So we didn't know that it had been spent and they were still spending.
Right, so that, that's, that's the key right there. That's what I wanted to get at, is that, is that, um, they, they thought they had eight thousand dollars because they hadn't received the invoice and, and, and hadn't been billed for that yet.
Okay.
So they kept on spending. Sixteen instead of the eight that was budgeted for.
So they see that budget balance somewhere internally to know that they can continue to spend from that account?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no receipts against the purchase order, so it's basically, it's a two-way match, so it's just invoices, so there's no kind of match with the actual, like, when the.
Until, not until the invoice comes in.
Yeah, okay.
But you should know the balance of all the POs that are out there, so you should know that that eight thousand dollars is encumbered for a future expense.
Yeah.
So how would you overspend that piece?
It, so the eight thousand dollars is not just, I think it wasn't just Ingram, it was from other purchasing.
Yeah.
Too, and then we still had the Ingram money, so.
But still, I mean, accounts payable should catch that, right? I'm not an accountant, but.
You know, we, we didn't get reports for more than half of the last fiscal year because of the transition in accounting with this software.
Okay, are we, are we totally transitioned now?
Yes, we are. And now we're, we're, we're getting monthly reports again, and we also know how to run our own reports.
Okay, so you had mentioned, um, there was, um, another Signet or, uh, so is that part of the old accounting system? In other words?
No, so, so there's the eight thousand four hundred and twenty dollars, which was FY fifty-three.
Okay.
Bills and purchases that went over. Additionally, at the end of the fiscal year, we also say, well, what bills haven't we gotten yet that we know about? And one of them is, we're still waiting for an invoice from Signet, who's a security company. They logged in remotely on the last day of the fiscal year to try and resolve our door locking issue that we've been having. And they haven't billed us for it yet.
So do you know how much that is going to be?
I have an estimate if they indeed did only two hours of work, so nine hundred and sixty dollars. I did attach the encumbrance list, so like, we're still waiting for a, a few other bills to come in.
So some of this also is timing, in other words, we wouldn't, we wouldn't encounter this issue at the beginning of a fiscal year for that fiscal year, mine is, it's, it's a timing issue.
I mean, I think the nine sixty, I mean, that, you know, emergencies happen on the, you know, the Wednesday. That, that's not as concerning, but.
Yeah, but they weren't able to resolve it remotely, so then they had to come on site, June tenth, Monday, June tenth. I'm still waiting for that bill as well, and they still weren't able to resolve it. They were able to determine what the problem was.
So Erin, did, did you have any que- additional questions or did, are we okay with, as far as?
Oh, what I was gonna say, so it was really just, um, uh, the, your question was the same, I just wanna make sure. It almost seemed like we were on the same track, so.
Yeah, I, I guess, so I guess I just wanna understand, like, do all the FY twenty-three purchase orders close out? And do you issue new purchase orders for FY twenty-four?
Absolutely.
So do we, do we have exposed, so, so do you think that there might be additional invoices that we haven't received yet related to FY twenty-three?
There should not be, like, the encumbrance list that I did that totaled around, I think, fifteen hundred dollars should be the end of it.
Okay.
Because one, you know, one of the other things we do is we make sure to, like, cancel back orders and then we reorder them at the beginning of the year.
And because it's prior year bills, we, we, would we be required necessarily to, uh, fund that from the state aid balance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so I haven't asked to, to do that exactly.
All right, um, any, then are you ready to move on to FY twenty-four?
Well, no, I think I need a motion. I'm, so I'm asking.
It's a bill, oh, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I, I do wanna know that, uh, in my ten years, this is the only time that I've gone over budget. Um, and in the past, I have bought, brought a few prior fiscal year bills to the board so that we could pay them right away instead of waiting until October town meeting. But I generally have been on top of it.
So, so is it, um, so is the amount ten thousand three fifty-two oh five or is it eighty? Okay, so only part of that was eighty-four, eighty and ten.
Yeah, because we also need to cover the encumbrances because I, I emailed Mary and said, is, does that, are you totaling the encumbrances in that amount? She said, no, I'm telling you, you can't encumber anything because you, you're in deficit, so it's the whole amount.
Can I ask another question?
Yes, please.
So when the books arrive, so I know that there's some things like you dialing in to do the remote access, you, you, you have to ask them to give you the reporting and that. But things like books, that's a physical item that comes into the, into the building.
Yes.
So usually when you receive, you know, a physical good, there's some kind of packing you slip. So what's the procedure for when the books arrive, that pa- those packing slip materials that indicate what's been received? Is that provided to Eileen?
No, Cynthia goes through them to make sure that everything was received.
Okay, then what does Cynthia do with them afterward?
I assume she files them.
Yeah, so if there's no issues.
If there's no issue, we just file it.
Not gonna bother.
We're not saying, you said you sent us the new Tom Clancy and you didn't, you know, then you would.
But you could, but that would be a mechanism to identify that you didn't receive the invoice, right? So if you did a matching.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yes. So yes, we could change, as a preventative measure, we could change the procedure.
Right, so if you had that packing slip, you're like, oh, I got, in the fall, I got eight thousand dollars worth of books, where's the invoice? So that's the three-way matching.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that.
All right, then I will entertain a motion, um, to, um, for the payment of ten thousand three fifty-two and oh five cents from state aid. Do I have a motion?
May I say, uh, so moved, so that you don't have to repeat it?
Sure.
Okay, so moved.
I'll, I'll second it.
All right, motion made by Erin, seconded by Carrie, uh, for the amount of ten thousand three fifty-two oh five from state aid here. Uh, any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Clear the motion, Carrie. All right, so now we're ready to move on to FY twenty-four.
Okay. So, it's only week three or four.
All right.
Um, I will ha- you will get in your inbox this week's warrant, which is, I'm glad you're all sitting down. It's for sixty thousand dollars, which is a lot. And it's because we have annual expenses due at the beginning of the fiscal year, so we're gonna be paying Biblioteca's service fee, um, which is, I think, thirty-one thousand dollars. And our CW Mars annual membership that allows for the delivery and reciprocal borrowing and the catalog, which is twenty-one thousand dollars this year.
But that's totally budgeted, so.
It's all budgeted for.
Yeah, so that's fine.
And I explained that in my emails, but don't panic when you go sixty thousand dollars in one week, that's why, databases.
So, I'm working on an RFID project and I know this has to do with the self-check, right, the licensing fees for that. We decided not to go with our existing vendor and switch the whole system out because they wanted to charge like six thousand dollars just to print RFID tags, which is something that is like a four hundred dollar item.
Okay.
And you can buy a printer for like a thousand dollars and print them yourself. So I'm wondering if, what, what's kind of included in, in some of the licensing fees? Is it also the RFID tags? Do you guys print them?
We.
Or do they print them for you?
We buy rolls of RFID tags.
You program them?
Yes.
You do?
Yeah, put it in the book, put it on the pad.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just one of those things that, it, it's very relevant to me right now and I kinda wanna know a little bit about it because this is a big expense for us.
Yeah, so they're thirty cents each per ten.
Okay, that's very good.
That's our breakdown. It's not bad.
All right, great.
Yeah, yeah, so we buy them two or three times a year.
Okay, so sixty thousand is simply timing.
Yeah, so there, so there's, yeah, so, so, I, so, nothing in the sixty thousand is out of budget or unexpected?
No.
Okay.
Perfect, okay.
All right, um, anything else for FY twenty-four? All right, cool, um, IT update.
Um.
Where do you wanna start?
Well, I'll just say, with, uh, staff, staff taking vacation time and having a very robust summer reading program. We're gonna wait until after Labor Day to roll out laptops.
Okay.
Um, we would like to put deep freeze, reinstall deep freeze and continue our licensing with deep freeze. So I think I do have a funding request that's related on the agenda to buy Phronics for another year.
Okay.
So that we can have that, it's a security measure and a privacy measure for patrons.
That's the twenty-eight hundred.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that's something we currently had licensed, I thought.
So we licensed it for a year.
Yeah.
And then we need to.
It's an annual renewal.
It's been a year, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, that was gonna be my question as well. I was at the library last night and I saw a Wi-Fi, um, uh, broadcast that said something about deep freeze, is that related?
Yeah, deep freeze was the song.
Yes, so it's almost like IT finally got around to roll out the technology and now the bill's coming due again, so it's a little unfortunate timing, is that correct?
It's unfortunate that they did not install it when we purchased it.
Yeah.
Are you, no, so, okay, and, and what about, um, yeah, the, um, the book return and everything like that, that was an I, that was IT?
No, that's the Biblioteca system.
But that, it's, so does that fall under IT discussion? It's, it, was, was it a software issue?
Oh, the, the check-in issue we were having.
The check-in issue.
Sure, yes, I have an update, it's not doing it anymore, so the company was able to fix it at their level. So that now everything that gets scanned in comes off the patron's card.
So how is that resolved in, in layman's terms for everybody here?
Um, a staff member submitted a ticket, they finally got around to fixing whatever software issue they needed to fix. And now everything works.
That's good, fantastic.
Yes.
Is there any charge for the support request or?
Yes, because we, but we already paid for it. So that's, when I say I have a thirty-one thousand dollar contract with Biblioteca, it's exactly to do.
All right, so it's built into the contract, yeah.
Built into the contract. Yeah, software updates, technical support.
So now, yeah, I, I don't know, how, how many hours was that taken per week of staff sorting that, that now they have back?
Um, however long it takes to scan one item.
I didn't know how, I didn't know how time.
Two hours, maybe an hour, hour to two hours.
I didn't know how time-consuming that was from a manual standpoint.
You have to scan it and then read this, the screen to determine, can I just put it on the cart to be shelved? Is it on hold for a patron, in which case I need to print a slip and put it on the cart? Or is it going just, is it really truly going into the delivery bin as the system thought? And is it really off the patron's card?
So we, it's safe to say that, so it's safe to say that's been resolved?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Absolutely.
All right, um, any other IT?
Um, a, a patron, one of the, the things that were on our patron comment log was somebody wanted to know, um, are we going to ever use the, um, tablet holders that were installed outside of the meeting rooms to hold tablets so you could see? Is that you, is that why you're smirking?
Maybe.
And, and if, if we weren't gonna use them, well, first, it's a safety hazard, because they're sticking out of the wall, it's a safety hazard.
I ripped one off the wall.
And then secondly, if we're not going to use them, can the patron have it? It wasn't you, it was somebody else.
The paper have the, the, the holder?
Yeah.
I don't think so.
Wait, wait, did the patron had the holder?
No, the patron asked, said, said, why are these here, you're, are you ever gonna use them? You should use them and they're dangerous, and if you're not gonna use them, can I have one?
So I, I took some pictures in the walkabout, long story short is, I think we should remove them. Yes, I think they're dangerous, and I ripped one out of the wall because it was already half coming out of the wall.
Great.
So, yeah, but I, yeah.
Should I ask custodial to take care of that or do I have a volunteer from the group?
And that's, that's because, I, I know there was an issue with the, having to recharge those things, but is, if, is that the only issue? Is keeping them charged or can you not book the rooms from those tablets?
The devices that were ordered to hold them will hold a tablet, but they will not secure a tablet.
But we have the tablets and the holders.
We do have the tablets, yeah. We, we have them to, to circulate once we start circulating tablets.
Honestly, um, from a technology perspective, I think it's less than ideal. We, we were able to pull up the calendar, right, on these devices, but I, I just don't think it's very, um, I mean, I guess it's no, no more, no more user-friendly than pulling it up on your cellphone.
Yeah.
But I think that was, at least my understanding is that when we put it on there, it's like, okay, well, this is very hard to, to manage the schedule. Because it's like a desktop calendar, you know, so I would be okay if we decided that we wanted to, um, say it was a failed attempt and, and call it that.
And we can repurpose the tablets, is what you're saying, and have them in circulation?
The tablets we can use and the holders, it could be that another, you know, town department would want them or be able to use them.
Yeah.
Um, we could also do a Q, I would love to do a QR code sticker and just put one on each window and then you could use your phone and just, you know.
That's a great idea.
Okay.
Most people are making their reservations on their own at, from home in advance. And then we take walk-ins or people who don't have a card and we just do the, do it for them right away.
Okay.
All right, um, are we ready?
But if they get rem- sorry, if they get removed, someone's gonna have to patch it.
We'll have to patch, yeah, so that would be, I would request that from custodial and it might be a learning opportunity for the new custodians. We do have a new custodian.
Great.
So, for the town.
Awesome, um, are we ready to move on to Library Capital? Dana is not here, so I guess Doug? Are we all set with IT? Okay, Doug?
Yep, I can give an update, um, so lots of new purchases and things coming in. We completed the patio furniture, so there was a bunch of patio furniture for the teen patio and for the community patio. That finally came in, well, it came in a while ago, but we finally put them all together, that was quite a, quite a job. Uh, but they're all put together. We have ordered, um, and received these musical instruments. These are those kind of stand-up things that go in the garden and people can go in there and play music in them, so they've been received and we're just working on installation.
So I can bring my inner child to.
Your inner child, okay.
So, um, so Doug, I saw your email that those arrived, um, and I know we're looking for staff input. Dana and I actually walked in the children's area and we're kinda thinking about areas that made sense. There's, um, a plot kind of close to where that, I don't know, the, where the boiler room is, like, kind of at that end. Um, that might be a good spot for some of like the, the flowers, so I'm happy to help unpack and look at them with you. Dana asked me to reach out to you to, you know, to do that, she's trying to delegate a little bit, so.
Yeah, and we met with, I don't remember if you were involved in that, but with Sarah, and they picked out some potential ideas. And I think the thought is to actually unpack them and get them and actually see how big they are.
See how big they are, yeah, so, yeah, so I think that would be great. We could even, you find time when Sarah and, you know, any of the other children room staff are available, you know, to do that. And so I'm happy to help out with that.
I think that's gonna be exciting.
Yeah.
Um, and then we've ordered the concrete game tables, these are like concrete chess tables that will end up on the teen patio. Um, and I heard they're getting shipped this week and should arrive next week.
Oh, wow, that's exciting, yeah, that's really.
And the library staff has been really nice in receiving these things and telling them where to put them on the pallets, because these come in these pretty large pallets, as you can imagine.
And, uh, any concern, so those stay outdoors?
All of that stuff will stay outdoors.
And then we do have to think about the winter time, like, you know, kind of, you know, where to.
I'm just concerned about, um, misuse, I'll just use that word, of, of, uh, the pieces and, you know, mischievous.
So the musical instruments will be concreted in the ground, so, I mean, that doesn't mean I can't misuse them, but th- those are things like you see in playgrounds.
Misuse was code word for destroy.
Yeah.
All right.
Um, I think those are pretty, pretty heavy duty.
And those are on the side, like, to the children's.
Um, the concrete tables are concrete, so they're really heavy, those are things you see.
Chess pieces are movable, of course.
Chess pieces will not be left out there, they'll be checked out from the library if things.
Yeah, the chess pieces will be part of.
Okay, so that's not an overnight thing, that's an, it's something that people check out?
Or they could bring their own, too.
Okay, got you.
And then the patio furniture, I mean, that is stuff that we've kinda thought someone could walk away with that stuff. I mean, it's pretty big and.
It is heavy.
And heavy, but, um, there's been really no decision on that yet.
You know, it's funny, like, there's, there's part of me that's like, the cynical of, oh, this stuff is all, you know, gonna get swiped. But honestly, I, I'm trusting that, you know, we, we live in a community and those people driving through, knock on wood, will not take that stuff. And, and if they do, we'll just have to deal with that. I mean, I, I can only imagine, that does take some time and effort and energy to, to just lock all that stuff up and chain them all together.
That was the big concern, is having to have the staff or somebody responsible for locking it up every night, it's just, that's a lot of work. And I, one of the questions that keeps coming up to me, Beth, is do we have any, any outdoor security cameras?
So I'm actually just pulling up our security camera footage right now, because I believe we have the entire walkway, like, from the children's room, emergency exit, down toward the amphitheater and another one on the amphitheater, and I'm pretty sure there's one on the teen patio, too.
Do we have an exit sign, a, a sign on the exit, I know that, on the interior, about, you know, cameras in use in common areas? Do we have one on the exterior that lets people know that they're, um, you know, that the place is under?
Keep people honest.
Yeah, that's the note I'm writing now, I think, yeah, that might be one option, is just buy a couple outdoor signs and stick in those areas.
Right.
I agree with that, um, I think when we had problems in the area of the old library before the construction, where people were taking the video game DVDs out, they put up a sign that says you're under surveillance and, I don't know if it helped, but it certainly, um, you know, is a, is a warning to people not to pocket this stuff.
All right, and those, those, uh, those videos have kept their retention?
Yes.
I mean, it would be very noticeable, yeah.
Or that there's damage.
Yeah, I mean, video games would be harder to check, cause if somebody doesn't check out the game. But the patio, I think it would be pretty.
No, I'm talking, no, I'm talking about things, if some, when, when we video interior right now, or exterior, how long is that retained?
Indefinitely.
Indefinitely?
Yeah.
I thought it was thirty days.
Well, they have cloud systems now for backups.
Okay.
I can't log in, but I, I will go back and check, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so that's fair warning, anybody who swipes our patio furniture, we're gonna get your camera. Hopefully just come and use it.
Any other capital update?
I don't think so, the, I think, I can't remember if that was last month, but all the donor signs have been installed in the various spaces and they look, they look beautiful.
They absolutely do.
And, oh, I know, and one last thing is, we are working on a landscaping project. And if you've noticed at the front of the, on the Upton Street entrance, there's like that big island and then right around the actual Grafton sign. The plantings, I don't think were that appropriate for that area. They're kind of growing like crazy and stuff like that, so we have a, a project underway to clean that stuff up.
Alright, great.
So we got a quote from a local bureau.
Alright, and what, what's the capital, what's the fund balance on that?
It's about two hundred and thirty grand right now.
Okay.
The only other piece, and I had sent you an email a while, maybe last week, about the weeding, right? I mean, one downside of the landscaping is there's a considerable amount of space that needs to get weeded. So we need to try to solicit maybe from the Friends organization or something to get some people, some volunteers to come in and weed, to keep it looking good. And one of those things I think that would help would be some type of compost area. So can we designate an area maybe near the shed? I know the, there's wetlands kind of farther in the space, but maybe kind of right next to the sidewalk, if we can put a small compost bin, I think that would really help.
Yeah.
Is that a historic issue, because we had an issue with the rain barrel, so?
I'm ready to bring rain barrel back, so we can try again. And it could be now with the, you know, slightly differently different configuration of the site, that it'll go through.
So who would we talk to, would that be the town administrator?
It's Historic District Commission, who needs to.
Even in the back of the building?
If you can see it when you drive by from any point on either of those two roads.
Even on Upton Street, oh, I thought it was only from the common.
I.
I'll check with, we'll check with Historic.
Yeah.
So, so I don't know if this is the appropriate time, Roger, or not, but with regards to like the watering and just, I guess, coordination of volunteer activities, I don't know if that should be something that we put on for next meeting to kind of talk about?
I mean, I, count me in to do anything on site, whether it's additional watering or weeding and everything. I could walk up there and, you know, or drive, doesn't matter.
So, we have a lead gardener, her name's Christine, and she's there almost every Tuesday morning. And what I do is, everybody who fills out a volunteer application who says they're interested in gardening, I connect them with Christine for training, and then they can work whatever hours they want, and then just log them. So I can put you all on.
I don't know if it's been the rain, would you say, yeah, please, but has it gotten out of control? Has it gotten out of control because of the recent?
It's crazy, there's so much mustard, it's really invasive, like I yank out mustard.
Alright, so maybe we can keep up on that, maybe, maybe August will be a better month.
So I, I guess, I think that it's a great idea to reach out to friends and other volunteers and have people log up. But I think that we need to have like, like somebody coordinating that effort. And I know that you have to report volunteer hours. I think that we really need to think about like, collecting those hours and like throughout the year to make sure that they're reported, cause I know, like, you have to report them, like, you had to report them by July, I believe.
So that's for the heiress report, we actually track it every month. Kara, our new head of bar services is our volunteer coordinator. And the only time it becomes a problem is when someone who hasn't gone through the library to fill out the application and get queried, shows up and does work. And then I have to send out a note saying, uh, I need to contribute a volunteer, so quick fill out your paperwork and please record your hours so I can include it. But we do track it every single month. And I report that in my report.
So, so I guess have all the friends done that? Cause I, I know that.
I, what I do is, I actually ask in January and usually June, like, how many people did you have volunteer, give me that information.
So I, I think that, I think that we probably can, you know, have a more formal process to track that.
I absolutely agree.
Because I, I don't, I think that's, yeah, so, so maybe now that we're in a fresh fiscal year, maybe it would be a good time to reach out to anybody who we think, you know, is volunteering and then just make sure that, like, all the appropriate forms are filled out and that they're aware of where to log the hours. Cause I know I have no idea where to log the hours.
Maybe be assigned a specific area instead of just randomly going around.
Well, yeah, and I think with the gardening, I, you know, we absolutely want volunteers, but we do need to have some kind of way, like a sign of genius or something like that to say, oh, I'm available on Saturday. And then, and also be aware of the procedures, because as we know, like on Sunday, the library is closed, the, the water fountain, or the, the faucet is locked. So you can show up to try to help out, but you can't do it. So we, I think we really need, you know, we really need to have somebody, you know, from the library coordinate it and then, you know, make sure that we have the volunteers, you know, help.
I, I will delegate that back to the volunteer coordinator.
Awesome.
Great.
Any other questions for capital?
Would Christine be a person that would be willing to coordinate all of the garden volunteers?
Um, I think, so she, she sort of by default is. So when somebody fills out an application and says they wanna garden, I say talk to Christine. She has a message where she can email all the gardeners at once to say, hey, there's a need, work on this area, or hey, don't forget, don't throw things into the wetlands.
Could we have like a, a member of the library staff help her?
That would be the volunteer coordinator, who I will delegate this back to.
Yeah, I think that would be great.
And I, I know that what I will hear from her is, I don't have time, I can't manage more volunteers, because I don't have enough staff in my department to do it. So that's why, we have tons and tons of applications and we're not able to fill them because we don't have staff to work service desks, let alone to manage volunteers to come in and help.
Any other?
It's really frustrating.
That's it for capital.
I had a quick note about that. So I was supposed to be responsible for getting the Scouts BSA Girl Troop in town, Troop 2019, to come over and help. We did have something on the books with Christine, but we got rained out or thunderstormed out or something. And so now I just had to go back and get that coordinated, so.
Thanks for doing that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Awesome. Alright.
Sorry, do you think that maybe in the fall, like, cause I understand, like, you know, it's vacations and staff charges, but like, is that something that we can get back to, to kind of have that set up? Because I, I hear what you're saying, but we, like, we have to have a system to manage the volunteers.
I, I agree, yes. We did sign up genius, just so you know, in the past, and people signed up and didn't show up. And we also couldn't get people to commit to coming and helping.
Is there anything on the library calendar for it?
On the calendar, no. One of the things we tried last year actually was doing a gardening program, like every week for six weeks with a pizza incentive. We got people the first week, and then maybe one or two, and then it trickled off.
I, I would try the sign of genius again, and then if there are certain people who they don't show up, then we just have to reach out to them.
And I'm not shy on posting things on social media. We have a number of Facebook groups in town to really get the word out. And then a lot of times we'll hear after the fact, well, no one ever told me, if I had known, so, I mean, yeah.
We're the Friends Facebook group, too, so if there is a sign of genius, we could post it on the Friends and, you know, and I, I think we would get a good response.
Alright.
Yeah, so Roger, just on, on that comment, I wanna make sure that, I think posting stuff to advertise it at the library is fantastic on social media. We have to just be careful not to respond to anything in our official capacity.
I know, right, 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 and, and anything that could equal a serial conversation, I know.
That's all, this is a reminder.
We've had an internal flyer, too, we have it by the seed library, thinking people who are going to grab seeds are probably gardeners and might have, you know, an hour or two a week to dedicate.
But I'm also not shy, but I'm also not shy on both Instagram and Facebook to share other things on my wall that officially came from the library. So if it's out there, I'll share it, so.
Great.
Alright, are we ready to move on to Friends?
This'll be, this'll be nice and short.
Alright, thank you, Doug.
So the Friends, so we booked, our meeting got bumped up a week. The Friends are actually meeting next week on Tuesday, so there has not been a meeting of the Friends since our last board meeting, because we're meeting earlier than usual. So the next Friends board meeting is at seven thirty, it is virtual via Zoom. I am planning on attending, if another trustee would like to join as well, you know, please let me know. Cause as you know, we can't have overrepresentation because of open meeting law requirements. But if anybody is interested in joining, you know, please let me know and I'll share the, share the meeting information.
Yes, Erin.
Is the Friends schedule rigid, like the trustees' schedule meetings?
It's usually on, it's usually the second, or the third Tuesday of the month. Like, it's, it's not as rigid, but it's usually Tuesdays.
Is it something that we, we know in advance, we can post it here on the agenda, just?
I mentioned it last week and asked for it to be added, and I don't think it was added, but I did, I did ask for it last week. And I was told, wasn't a board, so.
Wasn't what?
I did, I did, in our last meeting, I did indicate it, and I did ask for it to be added to the agenda.
Okay, so I think it was just an oversight?
I was told that, it was not a meeting of a town department.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
Then it's not, it's not technically a town department.
I see, so it really just needs to be a reminder for us.
Okay.
Okay, perfect.
Alright.
Yeah.
But again, we can't have four members, you know, three is okay, four is not okay.
Right, right. Alright, are we ready to move on to director contract? I know that in our last meeting, Erin and I had, you know, we, we discussed about us collaborating and, and the possibility of, you know, at, at some point in the near future, getting some type of, I know, Beth, you had sent me, well, actually you'd sent the board before my tenure. It was in December, a bunch of attachments. And I had actually since forwarded that to Erin as well, and, and we had briefly chatted about my having looked at, I don't know whether it was Mass Library Association or MBLC, some, there are some draft, okay, policy, not policies, but draft contract documents. Now, I know that some of the thoughts that had come to mind before, I, I just don't wanna put the cart before the horse, is that our town charter calls for town administrator to appoint department heads. So town administrator is your appointing authority. I also am aware that the charter calls for an annual performance review of department heads. So, you, so I know that our current town administrator has been here since early twenty-one, and it's my understanding that you have not had a performance eval?
No.
Okay, any step rate discussion?
I can put in two percent.
Okay, okay.
I maxed out.
Okay.
And I suggested that I should be in the next grade.
Alright.
And there's no money for that.
Okay, and so, and then the other thing, as a sort of subset of the, you know, evaluation, I don't know to what extent, if at all, anyone, including department heads, get a three sixty evaluation. And I don't know whether that's a common practice in municipalities. But I know in the private sector, it just seems to make sense that the day-to-day people who you work with get to weigh in, not just the executive board. And that, then you take these sort of outliers, that, that I say the fake good and the fake bad, and then you kinda average the middle, I know that's how the town administrator's evaluation works. And so, that just seemed to, to be included in part of the process. Now, I know we have a personnel bylaw. I know that part of not your documents, but our documents, that our own Board of Library Trustees bylaws kind of place it here about responsibilities that talk about, that our responsibilities shall be to appoint a qualified library director. And then some of the duties at a high level are contained in that document. And then you combine that, I guess, with the personnel bylaw, the classification plan and such. Aside from wanting the word, your duties to be articulated, is it also a, of great interest to you to have that contract include tenure? Or a certain, no, you say one, two, three years, is that something that is?
It's usually like a three-year and then renewable, yeah.
Alright, and, and because I, I didn't know what part of your day-to-day that was most, you were most interested in having articulated, or was it just having the whole thing? Or was it? Okay, alright. And the other thing I wanted to, to mention is, and I took a snapshot from online, is that when we talk about a library director having a contract, the general laws don't specifically point out to library directors, they point to library employees. And that, I just wanted to clarify and, and seek input from you, Beth, and the, and the board, that it's, oh, boy, I took a snapshot online, section seven, is seventy-eight, General Laws, Chapter Seventy-Eight, Section Thirty-Four, Employment Contracts for Library Employees. So, Board of Trustees of a Free Public Library in any city or town are in the absence of such board, et cetera, et cetera, except those employees subject to Chapter One Hundred and Fifty-E, which is the collective bargaining. So if there's a collective bargaining agreement in place, that preempts then the authority of us to then, you know, trump that. So this refers to then employees of the library that are not under a collective bargaining agreement, that the library trustees basically shall execute a written employment contract with an employee of said library outlining the basic conditions of employment, including but not limited to the establishment of a probationary period procedure for dismissal during this period and the establishment of a procedure which specifies the cost for dismissal after the completion of such probationary period. It's a very brief section of the general laws. And so, I'm thinking this might be duplicative of our personnel bylaw in some sense, but it also spoke to, I guess, what we should have been doing with every library employee if we are to read this section by the letter.
But if they're now part of the union collective bargaining, does that?
In other words, up to the point that they became, that they organized, I guess everyone, including you, this, this is how seventy, what is it, seventy-eight dash thirty-four reads, that it isn't specific to library directors, it's, it's all employees. And so, I was under the impression that, at least insofar as our charter calls for the library trustees to be in charge of facilities and buildings and everything, and that we work in conjunction with you to oversee everything. This was my first read today, and I was surprised that, up until the point that they organized about a year ago, that it was the trustee's role to execute a, a contract. And I use that term loosely, they use the term contract, but it seems to articulate that we're responsible to have at least assured that there were general working conditions adhered to. But that may, it seems to duplicate that which is already articulated in the personnel bylaw. Now that's in the past, they're organized, who is not, who is not under a collective bargaining?
I'm not able to answer that question, I don't have a list of who's in and who's out.
Okay, so is, is it more than half, or?
I'm not able to answer that question, I don't have a list of who's in the union and who's paid dues and who hasn't.
Okay.
I think they're all eligible.
Alright, so, so.
We're just starting negotiations.
Okay, so, I, I think for starters, I know that our discussion had been generally that you had mentioned that you were, you know, without a contract, and, and we know that, and you've been working here twelve years now?
Ten.
Ten, twelve, alright, so ten. And so, but not to now ignore the fact that this section, which reply, which applies to contracts, relates to all library employees if we had to read it to the letter. And so, we would also then at some point need to know who's part of the union, who's not. And maybe even see guidance from MBLC or MLA. I don't wanna reinvent the wheel, I'm not familiar with these matters, and it just seems like beyond the scope of what's outlined in the charter as to what a Board of Library Trustees in Grafton, what the scope of our role is, to now be getting involved in the job that, they use the term contract, but it seems to be job description.
And, and is it employee or employees in the Mass General Law?
I mean, at least historically.
It's singular, it would be just the director.
No, it says the Board of Trustees of a Free Public Library, hold on a second. The city of, the Board of Trustees shall, with the exception of those subject to collective bargaining, execute a written employment contract with an employee of said library outlining the basic conditions of employment.
An employee?
An employee.
So if the director is joining the municipality and is in. So if the director is joining the municipality and is in the union, they're covered. But if they're not, then they're not covered, and we need a separate contract. I can tell you that on the heiress report, MBLC does not ask if library staff have contracts.
Okay.
They ask, does the director have a contract?
Right.
You can ask legal for an opinion.
Yeah, I, I would, I would like to clarify that, because I, I think that, not, not, I mean, I know that, um, you know, you've been without a contract. But it's, the way this reads is that, all right, how do I say this without sounding disparaging? The way this reads is that, insofar as a contract is concerned, you're in the mix with everyone else, even though you're the director. Okay.
But that's the laws, but then as far as accreditation, right, does MBLC require that the director have a contract for accreditation?
No, for accreditation, they just require you have a master's degree.
Okay.
Right, yeah, I knew that.
But they, and they, they also, like for our state aid, we need to fill out the heiress report, and there's a question on the heiress report that's just a yes or no.
Okay.
There's no penalty, but they're asking to put it, like, in people's minds, that you're supposed to have one, do you have one? I mean, I could take, we could take a look at the heiress report responses from last year, and run the report and see how many people have them and how many don't.
I think it would be helpful to have legal advise us, because it's, I mean, it's, none of us are lawyers.
At least historically, this group has provided, um, performance reviews for Beth, like we've added some commentary, we've sent it to the TA.
I did not know that.
Yeah, I mean, I can't remember when the last one was, it's probably been two years.
It's been a long time.
So it was not during Evan's tenure? It was Mr. McInerney's tenure?
Would have been with Mr. McInerney.
Pre-COVID.
Um, and many of these were around trying to advocate for the director, you know, for a salary increase or something like that. But certainly, I think that's within, it seems like that's within our, our directive, is to be able to provide a, um, performance review for.
Right.
When we, when we did the search for Beth, um, we, um, I was, I was on the board at the time, and I was part of the search committee, there was also members of library staff, you know, on that, and, and also the assistant town administrator. So we were able to give input, but it was the town administrator's final call, as far as like hiring.
And that's because it's outlined in the charter.
Right.
Right.
But that would include, you know, advocating for, you know, salary or compensation changes, advocating for a contract, and maybe even giving some suggestions on what that contract should look like as far as the term and stuff.
Okay, all right, so, so.
Are you, sorry, I don't know, is this the right question to ask here, is, are you looking for, you're looking for a grade change in addition to the contract?
I am, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Do we have any, because I did a lot of research in town, and I, I, my opinion is that she is underpaid compared to some other positions in town that have similar responsibilities and, and directive. Do we have any, is the salary information for library directors across the state, I mean, it's public information, is that easy to get?
She gave us a.
I thought that I forwarded that.
That was in that big Excel sheet?
You have, yeah.
In the yellow section was the, the, um, the, um, the tier.
There's a wide range, though.
Right, absolutely.
It's a tier of similar-sized towns.
I think you just downloaded it from MBLC.
And there's actually three comparisons you can make, the one that the town generally uses is based on, like that, I forget what the word or the acronym is for it, but it's based on how much income the town, it's revenue the town raises. So I think Grafton's like sixty-nine million dollars a year, I think. Um, so we get compared to like Ashland, but not Dover, and not Shrewsbury, because like Shrewsbury has lots of business, right? So, so we're in the whatever sixty to seventy million dollar range, and that's what they compare us to. But from a library standpoint, I'm looking at libraries with similar populations, libraries with similar budget, libraries with similar physical facility, and libraries with similar staffing, and where do I rank? Because it, like, maybe we're more like, I don't know, Quincy, or, you know, Dover.
And because I have not done this before, I'm, this piece is new to me. I don't know to what extent you tie, or we tie requests, um, or, or part of our evaluation. Again, it goes to the town administrator, but, um, that we tie that into, you know, that this, we make an evaluation, and then we sort of say, all right, here's where we think she should be. And then, and, and so do we seek input from employees, there's no three sixty type of eval? Is that, is that, is that typical or not?
For the salary?
I would have to ask.
No, no, for a, for a contract.
I don't know what other departments do.
No, for an annual, for an evaluation.
I would have to ask other departments, but my understanding is the town administrator reviews all the department heads.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, all right.
I would think this group can come up with an opinion based on these monthly meetings.
Okay.
You know, knowing the operations of the library, and what she does, and, and as an individual, if you want to reach out to other staff, you can get that feedback too.
Yeah, and I think, I think especially now that they're organized, and, and the role of our, I mean, we're an executive board, and so I would feel uncomfortable on an official basis trying to seek input from individual employees, I don't know how anyone else feels about that, but that.
Yeah, it's not really a great position for us to ask Beth's staff, because in turn, we're actually her staff's bosses in a way, because we oversee the library. And so it's, you're not really going to get an honest opinion, it's probably not really appropriate, um, you know.
I would take a look at the roles and responsibilities document, I can share that out again.
Sure.
All right.
I mean, I think the, the, the statistics that, I'm sorry, the metrics that Beth mentioned are the ones that we want to compare, right?
Yeah.
Libraries same size, the staff is the same size, the circulation's similar, because that's, that's what she knows.
So what objectively then, is there any, is there any way we would be involved in, in getting in the mix? Or, or is it a discussion between you and the town administrator as to the step, step grade? And I know the classification plan is, it must be, it's publicly available, it used to be part of the bylaw, but we got rid of it in about twenty-ten.
Yeah.
Where it used to be voted on, the classification plan list used to be in the bylaws up until like twenty-ten.
Yeah. It was commissioned, so I don't know if that makes it a public document or not, I can tell you that I have it.
Okay.
Um, and I can tell you that I was advised by somebody who works for the town, that if I wanted a salary increase, the best thing to do would be to put it in my contract, that this is what the board has determined is the value of the petition and the description.
Okay.
Because otherwise, it's, I'm going to get two percent a year forever.
Okay.
And my duties have hugely increased with the expansion of the.
And I'll continue reviewing not only those that were on the, uh, either the MLA or the MBLC website, but also some of those similar towns in the yellow grade, to come up with some language, I, I noticed a lot of similarities. A lot, it, it seems like most towns, cities and towns are working off the same template, and then tweaking it accordingly. What was your, did you have a target in mind, not that you haven't been waiting ten years, but did you have a target in mind that you were looking at? You know, finalizing something?
A date, you mean a date to have it completed?
Or a date for us to at least have put together a draft document, and then.
Six months ago. By the end of this year would actually be really good.
Well, I guess, if, if we think about, like, if, for, like, any possibility of you getting an increase, it has to be within the budgetary planning cycle, right? So when, so when do you have to submit your budget to?
That's a great question, so usually there's a call i- in the fall, and then it's due November, December, so that's.
Is it due in December, is it?
It's usually like December first.
Okay.
It's, it shifts a little bit, we've been doing a little bit later than with Evan than with Tim.
Is that true, though, all compensation changes have to be with the fiscal year?
No, because you could have a contract, ratify it, and then say, here's what we need, and then you would work, we'd work with the town's, you know, financial people to see, are, how soon are we able to do it, can we make it retroactive to July first?
But you have to have the money, I mean, like, we could give her a million dollars, but if we don't have the budget to pay her, you know, like, you have to, you have to, it has to go hand in hand.
But in the, in the past, well, I was just saying, in the past, I think we've used state aid to compensate, to make up some of those differences, haven't we? Can we do that?
But we can't do that for personnel, can we?
I think, so we proposed to, we can for personnel, because we're paying part-time staff to fill in and temps to fill in.
But, but that's an invoice, like, that's not salaries.
No, we just, we shifted over into salary. We actually did a transfer.
We've done that in the past.
We had proposed to do it in the past, and it was approved, however, because of vacancies, we actually never needed to draw on state aid because we had enough.
But, but that was for other personnel, that wasn't?
No, that was for me, I was, I got a, a bump.
Well, was that?
A few years ago.
But wasn't that necessarily tied to, is that a fiscal year-end transfer that you're allowed to?
Yeah.
Do under municipal modernization?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right.
So we had, we had put in a, a three-year increase drawing on state aid, but it was only like a thousand, fifteen hundred or two thousand dollars a year, it wasn't a lot of money. And then, um, we had enough vacancies that we didn't need to draw on it.
Then I'll ask my peers here, I know that Erin, you and I had been in touch regarding, you know, discussing a, a little bit of this. Is it unusual or, um, best practice to form a subcommittee, or do you have, have one or more members of this board gotten together to do a task or collaborate on a task without forming a subcommittee? Because I, I'd be, you know, I'll, I'll be tackling this to sort of come up with some draft document and maybe some other considerations that other towns do.
I, I personally think it needs to be a subcommittee.
Okay.
I think it's an important topic, and we need to, you know, really look at everything.
All right, then, um, I'd be willing to entertain a motion of, I guess, a, a two or more-person subcommittee that would, I know that Erin and I had, you know, were willing to, to, I, you know, work together to put something, a draft document together. Are these things usually two people, three people, or?
So may I make a comment?
Yeah, please.
So generally, when you form a subcommittee, um, you have formal meetings.
Right.
I don't see this as one of those sort of tasks, certainly, um, there'll be discussions, but I don't know if it'll be in a, you know, formal, official capacity where, um, you sit down, you take minutes, maybe a couple of phone calls, maybe doing some, some research, almost like, um, I want to say, may, maybe the Capitol campaign is not a great, great example, but we have done several, uh, I would say like action items that you're responsible for as a trustee, uh, it could be an individual, or it could be, I guess, two people, I don't know how many examples of that we have.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I feel comfortable with, as I've read through these, is, there's a lot of overlap and a lot of similarities, I don't think it would be a monumental task for me to tackle putting together a document, a draft document, to then bring back in front of the, the, the board here. I know that with policy subcommittee, you're, you're leading that charge, and that, that we don't want to spread ourselves too thin either. I mean, I guess my consensus is, is everyone comfortable with me doing this solo?
I would, that would be fantastic.
Okay.
And, you know, you could certainly draw on any other trustee, um, you kind of know our expertise in a way.
Right.
Um, and if you want to tap anybody and say, hey, I want to bounce some ideas off of you for this, here's what I found.
Okay.
You know, I think that's the right approach.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would say both directions, if someone, one of the trustees has information that they want to make sure that you have, then we can talk to you.
All right, all right, then I'll work on that ASAP. All right.
End of the, let's say, end, end of the year would be a great goal.
Yeah, and I'm not going to give myself to the end of the year, I need to be, the fire to the feet, or whatever the, you know, so, what were you going to say? I didn't know if you had a comment.
Um, no, no, I think, I think you'll do a great job, and I think, I think it's helpful, um, like, you referenced, you know, some of the legal, you know, points. I, I think that would, if, if you're going to do it independently, if you're able to, like, when you present, like, the draft contract, if you have the supporting documents that we could review ahead of time.
Sure.
Just so that we're all on the same page, and we have the benefit of the research that you've done, that we, I would appreciate that.
All right, sure, um, all right, then I'll, I'll tackle that, moving on to long-range plan, um, Doug.
So I have an update, yeah, I mean, um, my hit rate is very low, I reached out to, I don't know, fifteen people.
Wow.
Um, and most of them just didn't respond. And, but anyways, the good news is I did hear, I'm trying to look for my notes here, um, Kristy Chadwick, who's a member of like the Mass, I can't remember the.
Mass Library System.
The Library Systems. And they offer consulting services to Massachusetts libraries, and, um, one of the things they offer is basically free consulting for one day. She's the only one that responded, she said that they could easily schedule a, um, date in July or August.
July.
They said that they can, they, they, she recommended, so I went to her with, um, two community dates and a staff date, um, for that.
Yeah.
And she said they can combine two, like, they can do with a community and the staff as one day, if you can, if we can schedule it, so like, the community meeting would be at night, the staff meeting might be in the afternoon, that would be one day of consulting, there's no charge for that, but they will not do a second day, even if you want to pay them. So if we wanted a second community session, we'd have to find somebody in town, you know, one of us, somebody else in town, or we'd have to hire somebody else. Given that I haven't been able to find another person responding, I think it might be hard, uh, unless we just keep, keep reaching out to others.
So they'll only facilitate one session?
One day.
One day, okay, it has to, everything has to be done in a single day?
Correct.
And then they'll write up the report and?
They'll, they'll facilitate what we want them to do, but, you know, she obviously had a bunch of suggestions on how to run that meeting. And, and I mentioned the two community aides and the staff, and she said just plan the community and staff on the same day.
So this is not a six-meeting thing, as I thought, I thought?
It's two, it's supposed to be two, two and a staff meeting, yeah.
Right, so two community, and the idea was we were going to do one in July and one in August, and then a staff meeting. So with this library systems, we can only do one community and one staff.
And so it could be like one in the morning, could be the, like, the staff and community in the afternoon or something like that?
Correct, or staff in the afternoon, and then the community at night.
So as far as, um, long-range plan is concerned, I know that there had been a number, Beth, of individuals that were interested, and I know that the, the call for help and volunteers was sort of just, hey, we'll, we'll take all comers, and I think that you had mentioned, Beth, um, that whatever target of number we were looking at based on historic, you know, twelve to sixteen, that, that we'd be lucky to get that many requests, and how many people have requested?
So may I just interject for a moment? So I think our job as the Board of Trustees is to advocate to the community.
Right.
For members, so, um, you know, I'm always thinking of people who'd be great on this committee, I've reached out to a couple people.
Right.
You know, sometimes you're barking up a tree, and they just say, I don't have time for this, you know, which is great, it's fine, and, um, but then, you know, just getting some feelings out there, I, I took a snapshot of the article that was in the paper.
The Blackstone Valley Express, yeah.
Yeah, and I, and I sent that out to some people, a- after having a conversation, I said, here's what we're trying to do, this is really important for, um, the community and library, so that we can, um, apply for grants.
Right.
And as a result, you know, uh, we had this fantastic library built because we had a long-range plan, and we got that grant. So that's kind of the message that I'm putting out to the community, and, um, I don't know if others have spoken, but I generally will point them to that article and, and to Beth's contact. So it's not like, come do this with me, you know, come do this for me, no, this is for the library.
Right.
Um, and, you know, uh, I, I'm just a, a member such as you, we never had done this before, so I don't quite know what to expect, but.
Carrie, I'll just interject, and what were you going to ask?
Okay, so in the art, so it was great that it was in the article, it did say that there was a commitment for one day in July, one day in August. This is actually probably a better, it's prob, if it's one day, we probably open up to more people hopefully being interested. Did anybody, did anybody respond to the article?
Yeah, well, nobody specifically referenced the article, but I had, I've had a dozen emails probably from people, but the, the process is a two-meeting process.
And it has to be.
Yes, it following planning from results, the first thing you do is do a community assessment.
Yeah.
Of all the great things about Grafton, and all the things we wish were different, and all the opportunities, and then you come back to the second meeting and go, okay, and then what does the library do, and which of these community needs that you, you think it'd be great for the library to have a community fridge, but we have a food bank. So the library doesn't need to put their energy into that. And, and from, like, looking at the community needs and what the library does, you come up with a list of four roles that the library can take on, and it's a very long process, and they also need the month in between to go back to the community, so it's not just anybody who wants to should volunteer for this committee, but key stakeholders in the community who have connections and can talk to people about, what do you like about Grafton, what do we need, what could the library be doing? To bring it back to the second meeting is vital.
Just to come back to, so to Doug's point, the person that responded, who is a member of MLS, who supposedly is an expert, is saying that it's a one meeting, so I'm a little confused.
They're saying they're only willing to provide one piece of it.
They can only provide services for one meeting.
Because of their limits and the huge area and network that they serve.
Yeah, there's like four or five of them for the whole.
They don't do long-range planning.
But then what are they suggesting, how, how were they suggesting?
They suggest that we find another community member, or you go for another external consultant, or you, you know, you grab somebody from the community.
Do we, do?
I'm fi, I'm stunned that we can't find somebody to come and do this, like, I do this as a side gig.
Yep.
So, but I can't do it for my own community.
I don't think we'd have a big issue finding a second person if we want to have those two different people.
Yeah, but you can't know it.
Do you think it's better to have, yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
Time out, time out, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I, I, yeah, one of the times threw me.
Sorry.
Yeah, so I think I can probably cut this short. I don't think that MLS is, is going to be the right fit for us. I think, you know, your final comment there was fantastic, Doug, that they advise that we get a consultant or reach out to some of the community. I think, and if you haven't explored this yet, it's probably a great idea to reach out to the trustee listserv and ask who, if they can recommend anybody for their long-range plan, because I bet you get twenty people. Maybe some of them are the same as the fifteen people you already contacted, but I'd be surprised if we can't get a live person to help us with that.
So, so along those lines, once we do, though, meet, it was not entirely clear to me, although we call this a working group, whether this is a public body as defined by the open meeting law, is it a committee, however we call it and however shortly or however briefly we meet? Because if it is, I mean, we certainly need to determine who the appointing authority is. And so there's a twofold concern of mine is, is it a public body under the open meeting law? And if so, then we would need to have that posted. We would also need to, again, narrow down who we want. We would, I think objectively, we need to define a specific number of people, not just whoever, you know, even if we fall short, is it seven, is it nine, is it eleven, whatever. But then the other thing is that under the Board of Library Trustees bylaws, there seems to be a conflict in two areas. When we talk about officers, Article Four, Section Two, the chairperson shall conduct all meetings, appoint all committees, serve as the official rep of the board, et cetera. So it says, the chairperson shall appoint all committees. In one area, Article Four dash two, officers, but in Article Six on committees, there's a sort of competing bylaw that says special committees for the study and investigation of special problems or for the performance of specially assigned tasks may be appointed by the chairperson or the board. So it's, it's, it's not clear, I mean, to me, I don't, you know, whether it's me as the chairperson or the board, it would, you know, I'm fine with the board, you know, collaborating and, and appointing a committee, but is it a committee?
It's not a committee.
Why isn't it a committee?
Because, well, it's not going to, we're not going to be, like, there'll be a one or two, one representative from the board, but so it's not a subcommittee of?
No, 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 I'm not saying it's a subcommittee of a, of the library trustees, but it certainly may, and I stress may be, considered. And this would be the Attorney General's office. I would need to clarify whether even a working, one-day working group, even if not constituting a quorum of this board, constitutes a public body under the open meeting law, because if it does, we need to clarify an appointing authority, but more importantly, we need to make sure that the meetings are posted, whoever constitutes this. I don't even know who would be the authority to post the meeting.
It's never been a public meeting, in, in any of the ones that I've attended.
No, but we've never treated it as a public meeting, but I, I would want to make sure that the AG's office.
Gotcha.
Would, would rule out this being a public body, however we constitute it under the open meeting law.
But you say it's not a public meeting. I mean, it was always something you promoted as, like, the library website, right? That this meeting's going to happen, you know, if you're interested in joining the group, please let me know.
Right, and then once we had our twelve or sixteen, like, that's it.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it, but it's not a closed session and, and-
Well, yeah.
But it was.
Yeah, it wasn't broadcast, it wasn't recorded or anything.
Yeah, no.
No, but it wasn't close to the public.
Formal minutes.
It wasn't close to the public.
I mean, I'm sure the library was open and people could have walked in if they wanted to.
It was in the room, though, like, yeah, like it-
I mean, I, I feel, I feel comfortable not, not, I'm not saying that this is a point of contention, but is everyone comfortable with me at least clarifying with the, clarifying with the AG's office whether this would be a public body? Even, although it seems more loosely organized as a working group, I just don't want us running afoul and finding ourselves, you know, that we're not accurately keeping minutes that, that they may think we need to keep or advertising it in the formal way that we need to publicize meetings. I mean, is everyone okay with that?
Yes, please.
Yep, all right.
May I just make a point of order?
Yes.
We're not even halfway through the agenda.
Yes.
And we're almost at nine o'clock.
And I would ask that we fast-track this, and I would ask that, we ask, if, is everyone okay with taking out of order New Business 5B so that the Rosses can speak to their issue?
Yes, please.
I do have one more comment.
Yes, please.
About long-range planning, and that's in the past, we have had trustees forward suggestions for people to reach out to who they view as community stakeholders to invite to participate on the long-range planning committee, and I haven't, I'm glad you're asking people.
Yep.
We haven't received any names to reach out to send a volunteer application to.
Okay.
So we should send those to you?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we need to include someone from the Friends, Capitol Campaign, Board of Trustees, and a staff member, so there's four slots gone right off the table.
Well, okay, the Capitol Campaign is four people, three of them are trustees, because me, Doug, myself, Doug, and Dana, so the only other person is Don. Yeah, everybody loves Don.
All right.
We also, we also want to get, like, diverse demographics too, right? You need young people.
Yeah.
You need to try to think about the library population.
The volunteers who submitted applications have been diverse, and we, but also like a teenager.
Okay. All right, are we ready for the Rosses?
Yes.
All right, yeah, please come up. Yeah.
They could have done that at the beginning, sorry.
Now, well, here's the thing, the reason I didn't do it at the beginning is for the main reason that because it was so far down in the agenda under New Business, I wanted to give the chance that we would be enough in the meeting that had we taken this at the top of the meeting, that someone wouldn't come in later and say, wait a minute, you had this discussion already? So that's why you, I had you waiting. So if you could introduce yourself and, and next.
My name is Trisha Ross.
Okay.
And I've been going to the library since I moved here as a freshman in high school with my father and family. So I just have one question, is it in the long-range plans to have a flagpole and the American flag out in front of the library?
So, so-
I was told to, I went to the town administrator, he told me to go see Beth, and I talked to Beth, and she said I had to come to the trustees to ask all of you.
So this is great timing, because what we were just talking about is the, so we are in the process of creating a long-range plan. So that's what we just were talking about, and we do solicit you members from the community. So if you're interested in participating in the long-range plan, certainly, you know, would be happy to entertain that, but the long-range plan has not been defined yet. That's, that's what's going to be starting.
And I'll, and I'll answer that question more specifically by saying that I know that you and Beth, our library director, had been in back-and-forth communications in that she had put forth or described with a link the minimum requirements in municipalities regarding flags, but I took a ride around town and I noticed that most buildings, if not all of them, do have flagpoles. So I like, I do like the idea. I simply, as, as just one, one person, I know the school, the high school has it, I know the police station has it, the municipal center, DPW, I know the North, Station One Fire Station has it, the old police station, which is now GCTV, has a tattered one. And so I can only say personally that I don't know if it was an oversight or whether it just wasn't brought up in the de-planning and building phase, but I, I personally think it's a great idea. I think it would, and I'm just only speaking for myself, not my colleagues, that it would also follow suit with all the other buildings in town anyway. And whether it's one or more, I know that at the fire station, Station One, there's a couple or more flagpoles where you can have one flag, maybe it's a POW MIA flag that's-
No, I'm only interested in the American flag.
No, 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 but no, but what I'm saying is, as you bring this up, we would certainly consider, or anyone that is thinking of flags, wouldn't necessarily exclude under policy flying other flags if there's more than one flagpole. That's what I'm saying. But, but to your question, just as one member, I, I would support that idea.
So where do I go for here, or where do we go?
Does anyone, has, does anyone know how, how much these things are budgeted for and what the process is? If you could speak to that, Aaron.
I don't, but I, I think what needs to happen to move forward with this is, you probably need to appoint somebody from this committee.
Right.
From this board, rather, to take that on as an action item.
Okay.
For the library. So, and then bring, bring, do that investigation and bring that to the board and say, here's what it's going to cost. I think it should come out of state aid money or whoever, we're going to fund that source where the town will pay for this and do that research.
Right.
So I think that would be the next step.
Okay.
I just have a question, point of order. Doug, was there any discussion about installing a flag in any of the building, your library building constructions?
I don't, I don't think so.
No, I would say that if it were something that was on-
I mean, it wasn't in the old building, sorry.
If it were on trend, then the architects would have included it as part of the project. If it was on trend and it was something that was very traditional for libraries to have it installed, then the architects would have included it.
Mm-hmm.
Or citizens who came to the, the planning meetings would have raised the question and asked us to put it in. And nobody did, and I didn't, I apologize, I didn't think of it.
And maybe, and maybe to that, to that point, just in my, again, my personal opinion, I would have thought that after my drive around town, I wouldn't necessarily compare ourselves to what other libraries do, but what other municipal buildings do. And so if, if that has been par for the course among municipal buildings across town, that it would be opt-out, not opt-in. You know what I mean? Like, I wouldn't have expected someone to need to do that, you know? And so, you know, it's just, but yeah.
Where would you propose putting it? We've got, like, a circular walkway with a division right down the center.
Well, I don't know that we have to have that discussion quite yet.
But if she has a thought, that's to where you, I mean, she's the one proposing it.
No, I, I think it should go in the front of the old section of the library, on one side or the other.
Okay, so HDC would need to be looped into that discussion.
So you can see the American flag.
Yeah.
The Historic District Commission would have to get involved for that.
Yeah, they'd have to approve it.
Right.
But if we had it on the other side, then they wouldn't need to be involved?
No, I think that's-
Yeah, we're not sure, but-
I'm not sure, but I don't think the Upton side and, like, the entrance where the little Grafton, the new sign is on Upton Street, I don't think that's part of the Historic Commission, is it? Historic District.
We'd have to look at the map.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't, I can't imagine anything being more historic than the American flag. I mean, we, we have, we have an American flag to my-
But they also might, like, say, it has to be a wooden pole.
Right.
You know, they would have that kind of, or recommend a height.
That's one of the action items, I think that person you'd appoint would have to find out. The only other thing that I want to just mention here is my final point here.
Yeah, please.
That I don't know what the procedure is for, you know, raising the flag and putting the flag down, if that's going to be a staff duty or if that's town duty.
Yeah, actually, like, yeah, who does it for the other buildings?
Their custodian.
All right.
We could keep it lit and keep it up all the time, as long as it were lit and, and not tattered.
You have, you have to take it down during certain storms and-
Yeah, there are some exceptions.
And then you-
And half-passed.
It's a good point. I think it's a, it's a, it's a good study about what the flag code is. I know I don't know it.
Yeah.
I have it.
All right.
If it needs to be a staff member, then they need to be able to negotiate that.
Right.
With the union.
Right, okay, so, yeah, please come on in.
Since you made the comment that we have a lot of these-
Oh, you have to come to the mic.
Oh, come to the mic, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hi, I'm Rick Ross, Trisha's husband.
Yeah.
Since you made the point already that we already have a lot of these flags in the municipalities and the different buildings.
Sure, yeah.
We must have a lot of experience with what they cost and what's required to do it.
I would think so. We just built a fire state, a fire station and a police station, so.
And I would think that we have a highway department that can dig a hole and put the cement in, the fire department with the ladder truck can put the pole up. I, I think we're talking minimal costs, so I don't think it would be a, a cost factor, and it might be something that, you know, the community can get around and say, sure, we'll know.
And because we're in charge of the, the facilities as trustees, we would need to vet this out and, and vote on it, but is, aside from myself, is anyone willing to take on this task of doing the research? Or, or am I the only one that feels?
I can take it on.
All right, Doug?
I think it seems pretty straightforward, and I've worked with the DPW for-
Oh, you have, okay, so that, Doug Bowman?
Yeah.
Okay.
Doug, thanks.
All right, I appreciate that, Doug.
Thank you for considering it.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for- There's some grant money available, too, that we could go after, that it'll pay for it.
Yeah, no, thank you, and sorry that you, the, the room's been heating up, I've been noticing, it probably feels like eighty-five in here. But yeah, but thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
So, yeah, I'm going to ask at this point, and thank you for your point of order, Aaron, that we really fast-forward things. I know that we only meet once a month and that we can, you know, we tackle a lot, but I think it's important that we speed things up and keep things to a minimum. So under the walkabout, John?
Yep.
Can you keep this to less than five minutes?
I think so, yeah.
All right, please.
I don't think there were any super major issues. It's probably not even really necessary to see the images. If you want to see the images, I can email you the album. Essentially, the, there was the water coming in near the teen room, that's, I guess that's stopped for now. There is some staining on the carpet that was mentioned, so I just had a picture of that.
But, but we did talk about that, and so Beth got more information from CTS, was it, or?
From Chandler.
Chandler, okay.
And then it to CTA Construction and the OPM to-
Yep.
Yeah, discuss why the door is not keeping the water.
Okay.
Yep, those tablet holders, they all kind of look, you know, like they should just be removed, so I might go and remove those, but then I would leave it to a custodian to patch the holes.
Beth, are you okay with that? Beth, are you okay with that?
Yeah. I am, yes.
There is one that is probably a safety hazard, which is upstairs in the main fiction area, I think, where it's, it's actually very heavy, it must have been for a bigger tablet, and it, there's no tension on the arm anymore, so. I noticed we have all those scan me QR code things all around the library, I think those are great. I think it'd be nice if we had a better way to display them, just something more formal and permanent. Some staining on the carpet, nothing that, that's, no, nothing that big a deal, I guess. I know we've, we've talked about carpet cleaning and stuff in the past. One of the barn doors in the teen room doesn't stay closed if you close it, it just kind of like reopens itself a little bit, which if you're trying to study, that might not be great. Some other little cosmetic things of just, I don't know, just some paint chipping or something like that. There are some cracks in the Makerspace ceiling. I don't know, I, I think there was a conversation about that a long time ago.
So it's been checked, it's cosmetic, not structural, according to the architect.
Okay.
And not of concern, I think it doesn't hurt to take a picture of it, though, every six months, just to make sure it's not growing, so we can compare.
I checked the water stains, and the water stains all, they all seem the same. There's a changing pad in the, like, for babies in the children's room, like, the family room, nursing room. It's not secured in any way, so I want to say technically that's not great. I know when I had kids, they all say like, you must secure like this, this pad thing. So I don't know, I don't know if that's a big issue, but I figured I'd just mention it.
Is it just like a freestanding table?
There is a countertop, and then on the countertop, there is the, the changing pad, which is like a little.
Oh, okay.
You know, concave pillow thing.
Put it down and use it so that your kid is not on the counter, and then when you're done, you can leave it flat, it doesn't need to be upright.
Got it.
There's not space in that room, unfortunately, it was not designed to have a changing table in it, in the family.
What if there was something that flipped down and then flipped back up again, like?
There's not room in the, in, in the space to put a traditional changing table. There is one in the bathroom, yeah.
Okay.
But we thought that for nursing mothers, you know, sometimes as soon as the kid starts feeding, they need a diaper change.
I mean, when you say there's not room, like.
On the walls, so this is a high counter, at like standing height.
But, but in that picture, you have it leaning against the wall.
Right.
So why can't you put one there?
Because that's like this, this wide, there's not room for, you, oh, you mean a long way one?
Yeah, just have one just flip down.
That's, okay, let's find it.
Okay.
We've only got the.
Yeah, I mean, it might not be the same one, but yeah.
Okay. All right, I misunderstood.
Yeah, no, I mean, hopefully, I mean, I would.
Okay.
Think that it'd be something we could do.
In the children's room, there's like a HVAC box, you know, it looks like some sort of electrical box. It's up on the ceiling, so it's not like a hazard or anything, but there's no cover on it, I don't know if that's normal. Probably not a big deal. Yeah.
What, what is it, that little?
It's that little orange thing on the top?
Yeah.
I never noticed it.
The next, the next picture, I think, is a zoom in on it. It just looks a little odd that it doesn't have, it looks like it should have a cover, and it doesn't, so I don't know.
It does look like it should have it, but it's, but it's, yeah, but it's not a, it's definitely, it's interesting, it looks, it looks like.
I, I don't know what it is, it's on one of the vents.
I, I don't want to say, but I think it looks like it.
Yeah. Near the staff break room, it looks like we're using that corner as kind of like storage for some of the extra shelves and things. So I don't know if we should not keep those extra shelves, because they're just like leaning up against stuff, so it might be.
It's all cleaned up.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Where you talked about the temperature stuff, there's still the chip paint in the Historic Reading Room because of the cupola and stuff, we all know about that. And I think that's it.
All right.
Yeah.
Awesome.
So nothing major, really.
And I will be doing August and September, so, thank you so much, John.
Yeah.
Thanks, John.
All right, welcome, and new staff introductions.
Do we need to table that?
Yeah, yeah, because that would have been something in person, correct?
Correct.
All right, and staff appreciation? I don't know what that item meant.
I think it's just we need to plan it.
Yeah, we need to plan it, but let's table it for next.
All right, so that's tabled, okay. Funding request for Ronics.
Sorry, before you table, when do we usually do that? That's September time, September, October?
We've done it everywhere, anywhere from September to December, and I think there has been a request to, we really don't need to meet and have a party, but we would really love it if. So we asked staff, can you give us suggestions? And one of the things they did say was, like branded apparel would be really nice.
Okay.
So we've done jackets in the past, but now we have new staff members who don't have the jacket and the polo shirt. They talked about hats or visors, so we're going to collect more feedback from the staff and then bring it to you. We usually pay for it out of state aid.
So that would be great if you, if we could get that for next month's meeting?
Yes.
Then that would be wonderful.
All right, all right, then funding request for Ronics, twenty-eight hundred, I don't, is that something that we'll consider in the future? Is this for a vote tonight?
The license is expiring at the end of.
She mentioned this earlier.
This is deep freeze, the security software and privacy software.
Do we have an invoice?
They have not provided one to me yet, they just said, hey, you're up for renewal, and I reached out and asked for it.
Up to twenty-eight, or is it, because I, I don't want to approve twenty-eight and then, and not be, it's approximately.
It was twenty-eight, just under twenty-eight last year, but I don't know if it went up or not.
So I'm just wondering, is there, what, what's the grace period? Are they going to, what does Ronics do?
August fourth.
What's Ronics do?
It's a deep freeze, it resets the computers back to default settings when patrons log off.
Oh.
It stops things from being installed, so it's virus preventative as well. It also clears the cookies and the cache, so it's a privacy software.
We, all right, so if we should, if this should be a little bit above twenty-eight hundred, and we've, and we've voted on up to twenty-eight.
So we'll just say up to three thousand.
That's what I was going to say, three thousand, yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
All right, then I will accept the motion to pay for Ronics for the, from state aid, up to three thousand dollars.
So moved.
All right, so moved.
Second.
All right, by Aaron and seconded by Carrie. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Five minutes to go, guys.
Declare the motion, Carrie. All right, so, um, policy update, Aaron.
So we don't have any new policies, we finished a couple of policies, but we want to make sure that you guys have enough time to review them before we vote on them.
Sure.
So expect the art exhibit and display policy to be in your inbox, to be on the agenda for our next meeting. Additionally, the food and kitchen policy, the union accepted all changes there as well.
Awesome.
The find free library policy, we revised, that'll go to legal, so that won't quite be ready for your review.
Okay.
Program policy, we talked about it the last meeting, and there was some discussion about patrons who are late to meetings.
Sure.
But that was more procedural, so we kind of took some of that out. Let's see.
Makerspace.
We did not talk about the Makerspace.
So if we could, for the, your next, like, if we, because I know they can't use that machine, right? That's what the teen librarian told me, that until there's a policy, they can't, the public can't use the machine that we have in the teen space.
I will disclose, it's becoming a, it will be a point of union negotiation too, so until it's in somebody's job description, it may not.
All right, so I guess we can wait on that.
So we can do the policy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Aaron, thank you, and the others, I, I know Beth and Debbie, who else is on the policy subcommittee?
John.
You, oh my God, that's right, I had seen you once entering. Thank you all for all your hard work, this is.
Really important work.
Yeah, it's such, it's very important work that is, it's very tedious and methodical, and thank you for your, for your really tackling this. It makes, it makes our job easier.
Yeah, it's, it's actually very enjoyable. I, I didn't think I'd like, I'd like it, but it's a really kind of iterative process.
Right.
To kind of talk through and, and think about how we really should be doing things, and this isn't quite right, or this should be procedural. So I, I'm learning a lot and getting a lot of experience.
Awesome.
And, you know, I, I invite anybody who would like to, you know, become a member of that subcommittee to talk to me about that, and we can certainly decide to change up if we need to. The last thing I want to say is, we are going to put on the agenda, the, uh, what was the policy that, that you had mentioned?
The makers were, oh, the volunteer policy.
Volunteer policy.
Volunteer, we need a volunteer policy.
We're going to, we're going to add that to the next agenda, I believe, to start working on that.
All right, great.
So.
And when do you meet, on Mondays? Is that like?
Next meeting is Monday, is August second.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, August second.
Okay, Wednesday's tough for me here.
I'm trying to get all my meetings on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Yeah, Wednesdays are tougher on me.
All right, thank you so much. Moving on to directors' report, Beth, I know that, you know, I read all of your reports and emails and all documents, word, word for word. And, and for the, for the sake of, I guess, brevity, like, I wouldn't necessarily expect a recap unless I had any questions. You know, because it's, it's, unless you have a comment, I.
I, I never got to sending it out, so.
Oh.
June was very busy. Everybody loves the library.
No, wait a minute.
We have the directors' report.
No, I don't think I sent it out.
There's the one from the town.
Really?
The town one.
I sent out the meeting packet.
Yeah.
I had it.
June twenty twenty-three.
It's very long.
Oh, I don't.
I wasn't done.
It was in the folder, I'm sorry.
I read it once and I, I read it again today on my lunch hour, so like, I mean.
Any questions for things that were missing that I can answer?
No, no, I mean, there's so much.
I was like, I just, I just.
There's so much work that, that goes on day to day and week to week, and to put that report together, so thank you for all of your hard work.
I think it's really interesting too, like, you see like the weekly reports, and it's like the libraries, like, really, like a lot of the weekly reports, so.
But did anyone else have any questions other than?
I didn't, so, so I, so I do need that email question.
All right, all right. All right, so public input was already done through New Business with the Rosses and the flag. So next meetings, I see Willard House stargazing next Wednesday. And I don't know who had said that they were able to go, I don't know if we, you know.
I, I think we're all going to try to go, right?
Okay.
So we have to post it, right?
All right.
It's been posted.
Policy Subcommittee on the second. Library trustees on August twenty-third.
So before you move on.
Yeah.
May I talk about meetings for a moment?
Yes, please.
I'm so happy that you brought up the trustee bylaws.
Okay.
Because it's a good point for anybody who's new to the board or returning from the board.
Sure.
Or, you know, existing members, that we do have, you know, an attendance policy written out in the bylaws.
Right. I know the, the four number, right.
Right, so, you know, we haven't had too many issues in the past, but I do want to just remind everybody that while it's in the bylaws to have, if you miss four consecutive meetings, then a formal letter is written as a reminder. But also that is part of being a public employee, we, you know, it's, it's your duty to be able to show up to these meetings. And certainly if there's extenuating circumstances, then we as a board need to vote on that and, and excuse any, you know, prolonged absences from the board.
Yeah, and I would also mention that, that if we are also to have an off-schedule meeting such as tonight.
Sure.
I think that's an extenuating circumstance, that if someone is unable to be there at a regularly scheduled meeting, that was the expectation, that, that, I think in the spirit of that particular portion of our own bylaws, that I don't, I don't see that we wouldn't probably, you know, excuse an off-schedule meeting such as tonight's. But no, it's, it's well-taken, I think it's something that.
Yeah, I think we have to be rigid, stick to the bylaws, and then decide if we want to make an exception. So that's just something we just need to keep track of.
Okay.
So just a, a point of order?
Yes, please.
So is it four consecutive?
It says, so any member who fails to attend four consecutive regularly scheduled board meetings, right? Will receive a letter from the chairperson reminding that member that regular attendance is a responsibility of all trustees, and that those unable to attend regularly should consider resigning from the board. Copies of these letters shall be included in the board's minutes. In the event of illness or other extenuating circumstances, exceptions to this provision may be made by formal vote of the board.
And I, and so we, under the agreement that something like Maryland's posted meeting is not a regularly scheduled, nor is a stargazing event.
Definitely, yeah.
And the other thing I wanted to bring up, and, and I'm, I'm hoping that it doesn't garner too much conversation, but I think in good conscience, I, I best, to the best of my knowledge, in good conscience cannot attend the Willard House stargazing event because it's not an accessible space. I don't even know if, if we were to technically have a meeting there, whether OML considers that accessible. I know there's like a four-inch lip to that barn area, plus the bathrooms, the portage John says they currently exist. It's not one of the accessible ones, it, it also has a, probably a six-inch lip, and it's not one of the sixty-seven by eighty-six inch approximate type of, you know, portage Johns that exist for functions, according to ADA. And so I think it's something that, I don't think it's fatal, I think that this is not technically a meeting. But it's something we, we're endorsing, and we also have programs there. And so that, are they in the regular part or the barn part?
I don't know, I don't have a program or run the program.
All right, because that, there's this barn building that is set up for like lecture, and, and has the screen. It has ever so small lip, but it's still more than the eighth of an inch required, and it's, it's probably like four inches. And so it's just, I think we should be mindful of, of that which could be constituted a posted meeting, even if we don't deliberate. But also in the future, that which we, programming, that which we endorse in various spaces that we may not think is inaccessible, that, because it just has a little lip, but that's technically not accessible. But it may be a quick fix in the future, that they have these rentable or purchasable, these, these, like aluminum ramps, you know, that just could be laid on top to allow someone inside.
So Frederick, have you talked to them about this?
I, I have not, I drove there recently, and I, I saw the space that, you know, the physical space of the main building and that which looks to be set up like a small lecture hall and screen.
But maybe they have some sort of accommodation or another entrance way, like, so I, I think.
Well, I, I wa, they don't, but I can, I can speak with them.
I think that's solely fair.
I think it's worth bringing to their board.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, you know.
They may not be, you know, it's just, it could be an innocent thing, because it's not so, it's not steps. You know what I mean? The, the average person may not look upon it as an inaccessible space, but as long as someone can't navigate that, you know.
But maybe they have an op, like, maybe there's a ramp that they can put down or something.
Worth mentioning to their board.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly, so, so I mean, I can call them, who's the contact person there?
I can forward you the director and the person in charge of development, who most of my relationship is with.
I know the schools, our public schools, I actually chaperoned, it was wonderful, an event, two of them. At the Millbury Street Elementary School, that I'm sure North Street does as well. So, so I, I think that's, it's a great point, but you, maybe there is, you know.
There may be something that, that is available, even on short notice, to be placed there. But anyway, so is there, so now that we've spoken about the, the various meetings, is there any other comments about upcoming meetings?